All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, May 9th, 2023 Select Board Meeting. We are opening our meeting in open session right now. We are being recorded and broadcast by cable access. We'll then enter into executive session and then reconvene here in open session again at approximately 7:00 PM. So with that, can I have the motion to enter into executive session, Dennis?
Yes. Motion to enter into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Finance Director.
Second.
All right, and we have three of the members here today right now. I do expect Stephanie and Seth any minute, but we'll go ahead and take a roll call vote to enter executive session.
Mark, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Leah, yes. All right, great, we'll see you back here at approximately 7:00. All right, welcome back to the May 9th, 2023 Select Board Meeting. We are being broadcast on and recorded by cable access. We've just come out of executive session. It's about 7:17 PM, and we're going to reconvene in open session. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, great. So going into item one is the Select Board reorganization. Our election was last Monday. No contested questions on the ballot with only little over 300 voters, and we welcome Stephanie back for another three years. Thank you, Stephanie. So with that, we always reorganize as a board at the beginning of the meeting following the election. I will continue, and everyone will continue in their roles and capacities that they're in today throughout the rest of the meeting, just for clarification, and then the new roles, if any, will be effective May 10th, so as of tomorrow, for the next year. All right, so we're going to go in the same order that we typically do as long as I've been on the board. So we'll start with a motion for the Chair, and then Vice Chair, and then Clerk. So, anyone I can start?
Please.
Okay. I've had a great two-year run as Chair. It's definitely a lot of work, and I am coming into the last year of this term. I'm not sure, you know, what exactly will happen next term, we'll see. But I think it, I'm willing to take a step back and let someone else on the board be the Chair. Obviously, I'd like to still see some things continue and move forward, but I do think it should be someone who has experience as being Chair. You know, John is obviously very experienced, but is new to the town, and there's quite a bit of work in the transition right now. So I guess it's a long way of saying I would like to nominate Doc as the Chair, if you would accept it, for the next year on the board.
I would.
Any other motions or seconds? Any seconds?
Well, second.
Okay, all right, great. So we have a nomination, we have a second. We'll take a vote for Doc as Chair. Unanimous, okay. All right, motion for Vice Chair.
Steph, if you're willing to keep that on, I nominate Steph as Vice Chair.
Second.
Yeah, okay. All right, great. All those in favor?
Hi.
All right, and Clerk. I don't mind being the Clerk unless you want to keep it, Dennis.
Yeah, I don't mind either way, so.
I'll nominate Leah.
Okay. All right.
Second.
Okay, it's a tough job, but someone's going to do it. And you've already had your year, so. All right, great.
Awesome.
Boom. So we have a second, okay, and all those in favor? All right, great, so we've got Doc as Chair, Stephanie as Vice Chair, and I will be the Clerk of the Board. All right, great. All right, so we'll finish out the meeting, and then this will become effective tomorrow. All right, thank you for your patience while we handled that business. So next up, we have the Finance Director contract, and we are not ready to execute that yet, so you will see it on our next meeting agenda as well. So we are going to skip executing that contract. And next is the alteration of premises. It is a public hearing, so we should start with that public hearing notice, please. While, if you want to come up to the table and get yourselves ready, make sure we can see anything that you have over here. And we do have in the packet whatever's been sent over thus far in front of us as well. And I will preface the board just by saying I have had a pre-meeting on this, just to kind of hash out any wrinkles or big questions that may have come up or that I may have. So it is, it's a big change, but it's pretty straightforward. Not that it's even really that big of a change, but just know that I did have that meeting with Jess and John and the police chief to try to kind of get any of the big things out of the way that we thought were. And there were a couple of things that we did work through there as well. All right, so public hearing notice.
The Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass. General law, Chapter 138, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, May 9th, 2023, beginning at 7:10 PM in the Gaylord Meeting Room, Town Hall, 40 South Street, Foxborough, Mass, on the application of NPS LLC doing business at Gillette Stadium. Manager James Nolan, One Patriot Place, Foxborough, Mass, the premises for alteration of premises for an annual all alcohol on-premises license. All interests of parties are welcome to attend.
All right, great, so we have your maps here. Can you see those from TV, okay, Mr. Beck? All right, great, and we have a presentation up here. So if you could just introduce yourselves and then go into the application that's in front of us here, and then we'll let you know what questions we have.
Absolutely, I'll kick it off. I apologize for my voice, allergies are kicking my butt lately. I feel like I'm not alone.
No, my head's foggy, yeah.
What are you taking, Claritin?
Whatever I can get my hands on.
Or a bowl.
Yeah, you know, a little cocktail of different allergy meds. We'll see how it goes. We'll see how tonight goes. Good evening, Chairwoman Gibson, members of the Board. My name is Tom Miller from McDermott Quilting in Millers, Boston. I'm here on behalf of NPS in this application for the alteration of premise. I'm joined by Jess Enos and Jim Nolan, who is the COO and manager of record for the licensee. As you know, this is an application for the alteration. I am going to leave it to the people who are most familiar with this to actually describe the process, to describe the changes to you and bring you through the presentation. So I'll kick it.
Great. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present tonight. I think, as you know, Gillette Stadium is undergoing a very large renovation in the north end of our stadium, and I'm going to talk a little bit about how that impacts the liquor license. The last time we changed the footprint for Gillette Stadium was back in 2018, and I have that, I'll move forward in the deck here. I'll let you drive, Jess. But on the left is our existing liquor license footprint for Gillette Stadium, and that liquor license covers through the, what we call the North End Plaza or Lot 4A. And I'll point it out here. And what it also encompasses is the entirety of Gillette Stadium itself, our practice fields, and our fieldhouse. So that's what exists today. So with this alteration of premises, we really wanted to do two things. One is, we wanted to redefine the north end of the stadium, the North End Plaza. We wanted to incorporate the West Roadway into our liquor license. And then, within the existing stadium, we just wanted to talk about level by level the pieces that are going to be new where alcohol service will occur. So, you know, alcohol service previously occurred, you know, both in the North End Zone Plaza and also in this area of the stadium with the stack we're building. There are, you know, layer by, you know, layer by layer, there's different pieces. So with respect to the North End Plaza as it exists today, and as the Chief will attest, when we operate alcohol within that area, we're required to fence in, with perimeter fencing, the area where alcohol is served, you know, so that someone just cannot walk into the space and walk out of the space. And that's been very successful with what we've done. The benefit of what we're doing in the North End Plaza now is we're changing our security line. So what we used to do up until last year is, we would bring people through the plaza, and the security screening would occur between where the ticket office is located and where the pro shop is located. And once you were security screened, you'd walk 10 feet and you'd have your ticket scanned. So when we operated kind of outside of that area, we would have bike fence, double rows of bike fence, you know, we'd work with the chief on the location, and we'd serve within that footprint. What is going to significantly change with the way we are operating on a go-forward basis is we're moving our fence line on game day to the perimeter of what we're asking for in the new liquor license. So this on game day is going to be a secure line, and our security screening is going to happen out here. So from a public safety perspective, it's better because we're, instead of queuing up a lot of people in tight, we're able to screen out here. Once they're in here, we don't screen them again. They're, we call them sterile. So we know that they don't have any metals, they don't have any guns, they don't have any knowledge to get into the building. But what this does for us is, on event day, this gives us a hard perimeter out here. So in the past, when we'd operate, we'd create a perimeter inside with smaller fencing. This now becomes the true gate line. Additionally, we're going to screen at the top of the Patriot Place grand stairs. So this will be another location where people can come down into the plaza. So screen at the top, screen out here. So this entire area, if I use a Patriot game day as an example, this entire area, people, anyone even without a ticket can come in here. To get into the stadium with a ticket, we have three specific locations. One, this is our Ticketmaster ramp, where people will have their tickets screened. We have a new grand stair over here, where people will have their tickets screened and walk up the grand stairs. And we have a third location behind the Hall of Fame, where people can get in. So what we're asking for with this liquor license footprint is to basically have the liquor license footprint mirror our new secure fence line on game day. And one specific thing with respect to the Patriot Place grand stairs, the Patriot Place grand stairs are not included within our liquor license footprint. It literally starts at the bottom, same way it does over here today. So if you're a patron up at Patriot Place as part of that zone, once, when you get to our screening line, no alcohol can go through our screening line. So the grand stairs, no alcohol can come down into our footprint. I mean, it's the same, it's our same measures. You can never bring alcohol into our footprint. Additionally, at these grand stairs, as well as our gates, no liquor can go out. So I kind of look at the stairs as a, you know, a free zone where the patron has been screened for security, but they're not within our liquor license footprint itself. What this is going to allow us to do, it's going to enhance our activations because that's where we have a lot of sponsors and a lot of interactions. And one of our additional goals is to try to pull people into the stadium earlier because, as we know, at football, people come at the last minute. So that's the North End Plaza. The second piece from the kind of the, I'll call it from the, you know, outside of the brick and mortar walls of Gillette Stadium, we'd like to incorporate the West Roadway. Again, we would only operate in that area when we have perimeter fencing set up. So what we did last year from a security perspective is, we brought our security screening up to here. So if you were coming, you know, I call it south on Route 1, and you walk up, you would be security screened right here. Your ticket screening would occur here. If you were coming from what we call our West Club Lot, you would be screened right here or right here at the two we call the cut-throughs. And then lastly, if you came from across the street in P-10, you would be screened here before you hit Bank of America Plaza. So similar to the North End, on event day, this entire section is patrons who are screened. So it's controlled by fence line, it's controlled by the chief's personnel and our team ops security. And what we're asking for is similar to how we used to activate in the North End Zone Plaza, on event day, we would like to have the option of operating on the West Road. Again, it would be a secure line with no alcohol being able to be brought in from the outside and no alcohol from the inside being able to go out. And then the last piece, the last piece down here, when we operate training camp, we do have liquor service in our training camp footprint. But the way we establish our training camp is patrons are screened out here, and they're screened here. So on a training camp day, when we've set up that fence line, we'd like to give the ability for someone who's bought their beverage here, who wants to head up and look at our activations up here, to be able to do so. You know, so with respect to the exterior of the building, it would operate only when we have that secure fence line set up. And in those scenarios, whether it's training camp or event day, the chief's people are engaged in the process. When we, Jess, we'll go to the next slide.
Just can I mention one thing here, just because I kind of struggle with this one, and maybe like Steph and Dennis, or if you've come in the, I call it like where the Foxborough lot comes in, is like, that area next to the blue, it is on different levels? So that, so the fence is before the multiple levels start? Is before the road kind of starts to go like this, Jim? Like one goes up and one goes down?
Yeah, this comes down.
Okay, okay.
This goes up and this.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's before that?
Yeah, so like on a Patriot game day, when we establish this is our secure perimeter, this is the only place that we would be serving alcohol. We would not do it in a place that didn't have secure fence line. In a training camp, when we establish the secure fence line from the middle of the West Roadway down to here, we could only operate within that. And that's why when we, in the description that we submitted with our alteration of premises, it specifically says with secure perimeter fencing and gates. So when the gates are up and it's controlled, that would be an opportunity where we could serve. You know, on every non-event day, it's not secured, we wouldn't be serving alcohol in that space. And that's on the exterior of the building. In the interior, I thought I would just walk level by level of what we're doing.
Jim, can I ask one question?
Absolutely.
Because we're here. So now that you're pushing everything out in the security lines, is any of that congestion as everybody's coming in, like going more into like parking lots? Or are we going to have all that crowd, you know, almost, you know, where the road is or, you know?
Yeah.
Do you know what I'm?
Yeah, I do, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Especially at that entrance is where the one that I come.
Yeah, so starting in 2001, we began incorporating a new security screening technology that is much faster. In the old days, when we go back to 2019, that's when we had these huge, massive queues of people when we were using what's called the magnetometer, the thing you see, you know, in many locations. Once we shifted to these new units called the evolve units, the people come through, at first, people were coming through faster than we could scan their ticket. So we would have no backup at the security line, and now, at peak times, we create a backup at the ticket line. You know, so in each of these areas, when, if I take here where we do the security screening, we wouldn't back up on the outside. What we would do is back up where we're scanning tickets.
So it's almost like we'd back up where we used to back up?
Yeah, because right now, it seems like when you're going through security, it is truly like a walk-through.
Yes.
Like, and everyone is almost like, oh, I'm okay? Like, we're all like stopping a little bit because you don't know if you've been screened or not. And they're like, nope, you're good, keep going, keep going. But so I guess each year seems like it's gotten better, and I think, I think, I'm not telling you anything you probably don't know. I think the problem is, people finally come up to, you know, and now that we're paperless, they get up there and either they don't have their tickets pulled up or sometimes the wifi isn't great up there or whatever. So is, do you guys have anything in your mind of how to get the actual scanning of the tickets quicker?
Yes.
It's almost user error. It's not what you guys have planned, it's user error that's backing everything up.
It's partially user education, so that as you, you know, as time goes on, people get better at it because they know, you know, like if I told you to save your ticket to your Apple Wallet, you'll save a lot of headaches. We tell people that, it saves a lot of headaches. The second thing, over the course of last year, what we found and tested is that the physical pedestal ticket scanners, the ones where you put your thing under the device and you walk through a turnstile, those are faster than someone trying to, with one of our security people with a handheld scanning it. So over the course of last year, we built up the number of the pedestal scanners that we have. So we invested in that infrastructure. And so what that allowed us to do is we had ended up with more, and what's nice about the pedestal scanners is we can have one employee manage two, okay? So they, you don't need, it's one-to-one when you have a handheld scanner with the supervisor behind. Now it's one-to-two, or if it's working well, it can be one-to-three. So we filled those spaces with the pedestal scanners. And we also think in the North Plaza, by spreading it out into three different locations, it's going to further disperse that. By having all the pedestal scanners there, it gives us the ability to use the additional people and the additional handhelds, we call it bursting. When we start getting backing up, we can give handheld scanners to additional employees who kind of pull people off to the side. And, you know, when we have, you know, if we have two-thirds of the people come to a Patriots game, show up within a half an hour, we know there's going to be some backup. But we measure it, and that backup has, the worst we saw last year was 10 minutes of ticket scanning. What we like about the sequence is, in, back in 19, when we had those lines, none of those people waiting in line were screened. So you don't know what anybody has on them at that point in time. Now, we've brought that, the people waiting in that queue have been screened. So the security risk has, is greatly diminished because you know the people who are in that queue have been screened. So that's kind of a, it's a non-alcohol benefit, but that's a, you know, a tangible benefit of what we're trying to do. But our goal is for people to be able to walk right into Gillette. That's the ultimate goal.
You know something? What we learned quickly is that, so obviously I have season tickets, two tickets. I have my daughter behind me, so I'm putting it through, and then I'm getting through the turnstile, and I'm backing up. So we've learned to, you know, it might be even something that you send out to email best, it's probably better if people forward their tickets to each person individually. And some people do, but if you have three or four tickets on your account, and then I realize, if I let her scan her own, I'm through. I'm not trying to come back and put my phone back under again. And, but live and learn. Like, as time goes on, we've learned what seems to be easier. If everybody did that, it would probably be a little bit quicker, too.
A bit better, yeah. And I mean, I can pause for questions on the exterior, or I can run through. You know, the interior is a little, I'd say, a little more straightforward. So all of the components of our new structure in the building, that sits within the existing brick and mortar of Gillette Stadium. You know, essentially, we took out, in front of the Cross Pavilion, we took out some old concession stands, and we've built a structure between the east and west of the stadium. So I thought I would start at the top. The top, we're going to have a, at the top of the lighthouse, we're going to have an observation deck. You know, it's intended on non-event days to be open to the public. It's intended on event day to be incorporated in some way into each event, you know? So it might operate differently for a Patriots game versus a Revolution game versus a concert. But that's a location, you know, that has no direct service. So if we were to do any service up there, it would be, you know, a portable. But what it's really intended to be is for people to go up during a game as a group, enjoy a portion of the game, and then have another group come up. So that's the lighthouse, and that's accessible by two elevators that go all the way from the ground floor, stop at the globalization partner's atrium, which I'll talk about in a second, and up there. And it also has, you know, as the building commissioner will attest, it has a, you know, safety, life safety stairs for exit. The 300 level.
Just a, what's a capacity?
I don't think we have an official capacity yet from, but it's probably about 50 or 60 people can fit up there, between inside and outside. Inside, you're probably talking 20 people. It's a relatively small, but when you come out, there's a glass wall that envelops it so you can walk, you know, all the way around the exterior. What's really neat is from, is you can actually see downtown Foxborough from the lighthouse, which was kind of cool. Until you get up there, you never know what you're going to see, but you can see downtown Boston, you know, Providence to one side, and then you can look down and see, you know, you can literally see Foxborough and the top of Foxborough Commons. So it's pretty cool. The 300 level, you know, we're not adding any new concessions locations. So the real key to the 300 level is it bridges the east to the west. So it was a pain in the neck for people who came in the west who had seats in the east to walk all the way around to get to their seats, whether that's an employee, whether it's a guest. So we've connected the east to west with the large wide concourse. So right now, it is literally movement from east to west, and we're not adding any service to it. We certainly could at a later date, but that's, that won't be any part of our 23 plan. The next level down is our Blue Level Suites. And similarly, connecting, you know, I won't keep repeating myself on every level, but for patrons and for staff, connecting the east to west is gigantic because to walk from one side, and if you walk from Section 101 and on Section 301 all the way around, it's almost a quarter mile. So it's huge. So the Blue Level, we're connecting east to west, and we're adding two new suites. So those are endzone suites, they kind of look straight up the field. And they're literally the next suite over from the last suite in the north.
When you say Blue Zone, Blue Level, that's like the top of the 100s?
So we, our suite levels, we call them by color. So one is the blue. So maybe start at the, when we look at Gillette Stadium from a pure perspective, we have the ground floor, which is the field level. The next level up, we have our admin level. The next level up is the 100 Level Concourse.
Okay.
The next level up is our club level, where right now, we have the two Putnam Clubs. The next level up, we call it our Red Suite Level.
Okay, okay.
The next level is the Blue Suite Level, then the 300.
Okay, so I guess I didn't realize it was two suite levels, that's what it was, okay.
Yeah, so we have two suite levels, and both the red and the blue level mirror each other. But so both on the Blue Suite Level and on the Red Suite Level, we're adding two suites. So a grand total of four new suites, all endzone, all endzone suites. The club level, we're adding a new club. It's going to be called the GP Atrium. You know, it's been announced, and on a Patriot game day, it's going to operate similar to the Optum Field Lounge, wherein you have to be an existing season ticket holder to be able to buy into that location. So it's not adding new bodies into the building, it's just giving an opportunity for our existing 60,000 season ticket holders who want something more to use that space. And then on other event days, we'll operate it similarly with different constituents. But what we like about that space for non-event days, it gives us a new function space. So, you know, we do a lot of business in the Putnam Club, in the Optum Lounge, in the Cross Pavilion, and this is going to be, you know, a beautiful new space. It was made without any columns in the middle, so it's basically a wide-open room. So we think it's going to be very attractive 365 days a year, regardless of what we're doing. And in that location, it will be similar to the Putnam Club in terms of services, or similar to Optum Lounge. You know, we'll have bars, we'll have food service and all things like that. The 100 Level, it was, the 100 Level's really been reimagined in that endzone. It used to be one concession location, you know, one big concession location in the back, a beer garden and a lot of portables. But by doing, you know, by having to go back to the bear studs, as they say, what we're able to do is reimagine it. So we've added two new bathrooms, so we added a giant women's room, and we added a giant men's room right at the bottom of the Bank of America. right at the bottom of the Bank of America stairs on the hundred level concourse. We added four new family bathrooms in that same location. We added a new guest services location. So now we'll have five guest services locations. We added a new merchandise location. So, you know, where you can buy your hats and T-shirts. And then we have multiple new concessions locations in the end, in in that end zone. So the people coming into the building, you know, we we have over two thirds of the people come into the building from that end, either through the Bank of America gate or through the Ticketmaster gate or New Grand Stairs, and they'll all on the hundred level land in this beautiful new space. And then on the field level, this is very similar to the Optum Field Lounge. We're putting in a new field club. So in the corner where the Patriots run out on the field, we've taken a small corner of that space and we're going to have a new field club. And that that will be for about two hundred people. So just to show you that that's not big scale. But those, the people in that location, I'll use Patriot game day as an example, will be able to watch the team come out of the locker room because we'll have glass on the service tunnel side. And then literally they'll walk around them as they run onto the field. So that, you know, kind of in a short overview format, that's what we're doing inside the building.
A lot of changes. And do we lose a lot of seats doing that or no?
No, no. The, not sure on the final number, but it's it's somewhere around one hundred or two hundred seats that we're losing. Because we we actually, we lost some when we put in the field club. We picked up some in the suites. And then what I didn't mention is we're reimagining our our robe honor, where we honor the military. And by reworking it, we're actually picking up, it's going to be, it's going to be a much better tribute to the men and women who serve our serve our country, but it also picked up some seats back. So we're roughly the same as where we were in twenty twenty-two.
Okay, is that the, is that the end of the presentation?
Yes.
All right, great. Chief, why don't you come up? Because I think that's where I want to hear from you, that you feel comfortable and safe with all this. Yeah, well, right there is perfect. Yep. Is that good for you there, Paul, if he's over there? Yep, okay.
Good evening, everybody. That's an awful lot to probably take in if you don't walk a hundred miles per event. But I'll I'll just be, I'll kind of add on to what Jim Nolan has kind of tried to explain in regards to the perimeter. The perimeters are all designed and the security perimeters are all designed for the safety and security of the events. So that is our starting point for all of these events. And what we've been able to do is is we've been actually working on this for many, many years, is to try to expand the gates and the crowds at the gates and make them more secure. So this has been happening already with the pre-existing footprint. So the north end zone is now going to expand even greater. So that way we can get more people who have been checked into our, in a secure area and not have backups at those checkpoints. From the police perspective, that is a win. It also allows us to manage the trains coming in from the north and south because now they have a destination area to go to and not have to go to other places and work against some of the the crowd flow numbers. So the the north end zone is really just expanding it slightly more. But I can tell you, on all the events, the gates are our priority and where we focus our police and security operations. So from the town's standpoint, it's extremely well regulated, especially in regards to the alcohol issues. Obviously, the alcohol issues are on the craft group to manage their own sales and who they let in, screening for intoxication and making sure they're not allowing people into that area to be served. That's still all on them. And we support them in that role, but that's ultimately their responsibility with their license. So I guess I'd like to kind of take on the on the expansion, let's talk about each section at a time. So we don't get, go all over the map. So if anybody has any questions on the north end zone part, I I think that would be the easiest to tackle.
No, the only, the only question I have there is, so let's say it does queue. Does that mean people are queuing up the stairs now essentially or down the stairs, whichever you looked at?
So they're going to queue in Patriot Place.
Okay, okay.
So anybody who's got like field tickets for a concert, they're going to queue in Patriot Place as they come across P eleven or other side of the stadium. They'll go through the security checkpoint and then go down the stairs.
Okay.
So could people go up the stairs? Yes, I can tell you most people always want to go down the stairs. And if the signage and the notifications are in place, we avoid that.
Okay.
So Chief, too, so when we extend the blueprint of the liquor license, so basically, that's why as as you're hitting a certain point by the stadium, there's big trash cans. So you dump everything, whether it's a beer, whether it's a water, a soda, so.
Curse.
Exactly, exactly. Something too big, an umbrella, whatever, whatever you're not supposed to bring in.
They have been notified, they're not getting that close and they've already been turned around.
So so when we, when we make the blueprint out, that's why the security part is outside of there. So it's the same thing. So you're not allowing people, so if someone, if I bring a beer into Gillette Stadium, I'm I'm actually bringing it illegally onto their liquor license.
Correct, it's a violation.
Yeah, okay.
So anybody coming into the north end zone plaza is not bringing alcohol in, period. Those are all being dumped. I mean, if someone is going to carry one across the park, let's be realistic, absolutely. But their staff will screen that, dump it, and then it's as the term was used, it's a sterile area. Good, any other questions?
So what's that gate called now? That one's?
It's going to be the the gate where people are being screened, it would be the Ticketmaster.
Ticketmaster, okay, all right. So then Bank of America, let's go over that. That's west, right?
So the the whole west side of the stadium. So the perimeter that you see presented is not new. We've been using this all last year and establishing that perimeter for our security checkpoints. The request now is to look at that area and maybe have some functionality use out of it. One of the things that when we deal with the crowds on the police side is we see merchandising. We see people who are just trying to get to the gate and get in. And I think the attempt is to try to provide some of those services outside of the ticket area, but in a secure area. So the movement of people getting to their seats is faster. The west side is definitely smaller and it definitely has some flow issues with the amount of people that travel through that Boa Gate, that or Bank of America gate. So I I do have a couple recommendations on that that I would just like to present to the board is obviously the fencing conversation. And we had a big full-blown meeting April twenty-seventh on this. This isn't like a new concept. This has probably been in the work potentially for over two years. But fencing was definitely, I needed that hard perimeter. I can tell you, as part of this security model, that perimeter exists anyway. So this is just complementing that security perimeter for the whole stadium for any alcohol being served. But on the the west side, the only thing I ask is obviously the fencing has been met in the request for all the secure area. But one thing I, you know, I'd have a concern with is potentially is pedestrian flow with some of the the setups that could go there, like vendors. So I would like the authority, or at least the stipulation, is that we do not impede pedestrians for vending stations, that we, that really be something that's looked at because that flow is so important and it's a, it's a big part of the amount of people coming into the stadium. And ultimately, if there was an issue that as the chief, I would have the authority to require or have that relocated if I saw something that was a concern.
And I think that's in our draft motion, we have that.
Yes, so that was town council. We were working on it and with John, just to, just, and I can tell you the working relationship about any of these potential pop-ups, they all get vetted in a process before any event. And we're aware of it and our offices are out there, the checkpoints, if we see a problem. But I just don't want to get into a situation where I don't have the authority to require it be moved. So that west side is pretty simple. It's just taking that roadway what's already in place. There's already a secure perimeter there. We already use it. And just utilizing it to have the alcohol footprint expand.
It's essentially that little parking lot between the main parking lot and the valet.
Yes, for if you go up for the for the medical facilities. But it doesn't expand into the parking lot in lot twenty-two.
Right, just that little, little one right there.
And then lastly, the, I call it the the bubble. Maybe I'm showing my age, go down the bubble. But that is just connecting the bubble up to that roadway. And I think, Leah, you were trying to explain the two different roadways.
An actual pedestrian, like what in my mind and the picture, is there an actual passable paved roadway between the two levels or?
There is. I sent you a picture.
Okay, but at the point, pinpoint where it where hairpins are at the end, you can actually fully walk around that.
Yes.
Yes.
So it essentially just kind of, I think there's, the training camp has always been a great draw for family. And sometimes there's things that they would like to expand up a little bit.
Okay.
And what happens is we end up with a checkpoint where they can't bring the liquor up there.
Basically out to hell.
And that's it. It's not a huge drinking event, but it does end up being something that has to be monitored on a regular basis. And it would actually streamline the process and kind of connect the dots.
But for game day, we don't anticipate there being any alcohol out there because.
No, that that's one of the main, yeah, that would be a negative.
Okay, I think I'm good on, are you guys all good on the footprint?
Yeah.
It is your all alcohol footprint. So everyone, we say this to everyone, has to be tip trained, certified or whatever, whatever it is for you guys. That's important for everyone. And then Chief, do we want to just kind of go into the the ounces piece while you're up here?
I think we should ask.
Do that separate, okay, okay. All right, so I'm good. I don't have any questions. Anyone on the board have any questions? This is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience have any questions about this? No, okay. All right, so a move to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor? All right, and then we do have a rather lengthy draft motion here with a couple of conditions that, again, we've we've already talked about, so nothing should be a surprise. But just bear with us, it is a longer one.
All set. Motion to approve the application for alteration of premises submitted by NPS LLC Doing Businesses Gillette Stadium dated April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Relative to the licensed premises located at One Patriot Place, A B C C license number zero 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 one three dash R five dash zero four two six, as detailed in section two of the Alteration of Premises Application, subject to the following conditions. If alcohol is to be served in the west side of the stadium in North Plaza, there shall be a, there shall be a security fencing enclosure for said areas. No serving areas located in the expanded licensed premises shall impede pedestrian ingress to or egress from the stadium. And if the chief of police determines that pedestrian gate ingress slash egress flow rates are insufficient in these areas due to the location of serving areas, the chief of police may restrict the use of or order the relocation of any such serving area.
Second.
Under further discussion, are you okay with that? It does mention serving areas, not vending areas. Do we need, you're cool with that? Okay. All right, any other conditions that you, either of you, John or Mike, feel we need? Are we satisfied with what's in here? Okay, all right, so we've had a motion, we've had a second. I don't think we have any further discussion. So all those in favor? All right. All right, great. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, I did have one question. Sorry. Now, there's a lot of changes happening and Taylor Swift is big and that's our first event. So, you know, parking, this, I don't think that the ticketing piece will be as new because, like you said, we've been doing this, at least in the west for a while. Anything else that we need to talk about or concerned with it being the first? But I think we've vetted through everything, but.
In regards to Taylor Swift concert?
Just the the first event with a lot of changes.
No, not really. No, I think all the the changes are designed to speed up the process and make it more efficient.
Hopefully it all goes okay because we've sure talked.
It's all about messaging and arriving early. I just can't stress it enough.
Yes.
That is going to be everything. I think Jess is going to go around to every guest, knock on the door and tell them you got to come early.
First one.
And that will really help.
The good news is we are actually, we couldn't ask for a better demographic, knowing what we know just about them from an age standpoint, gender, everything that we've gathered about this demo and what we've done too with advanced trips to this tour in other cities is just found out they are early, early, early arrivals, which is great.
Which will help their new.
Yes, they're early arrivals and they are also a really well behaved demographic as well.
All right. Are you guys, is everything running on time? I think the goal was for the beginning of football season twenty-three. Are you, are you guys?
Yes.
Pretty much on time?
We're on.
So everything's all, all constructions will be done and everything's a go.
But still construction for the concert season.
Yes.
Good.
Yeah, but, but, I mean, the good news, like, we practiced Taylor with every football game last year with the work zone. The space inside the building for the public is larger than it was for football. And then even adding the two, the two new bathrooms, we really wanted those to come online for Taylor. So the new bathrooms will be online for Taylor Swift, which is a, you know, that's one of the, another one of our problems we try to address. So that'll be very helpful too.
All right, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so up next, and I apologize to the Founder's Day Committee, we'll be, I know we started late and now we got a little behind, so I I really apologize to you guys. But we just wanted to talk about the alcohol regulations. There's a piece in the regulations that the chief has brought up that we just wanted to talk about and make sure everyone was good with. I don't know if if you want to kind of start and lay the foundation a little bit more. I'm sure you've all seen what's in the packet.
So I think it's important for the the board to always be informed if there's any kind of changes going on, even if I have the authority in the regulation. But one thing I think we've encountered is kind of a gap or our regulation doesn't actually allow us to authorize. So going back, beer was always the issue. Beer was always the issue, but now we have seltzers, hard seltzers. We start, so we actually have no authority within our regulation to regulate the size of those beverages. And so that is definitely a trend, what's happening, not just at Gillette, it's happening nationwide at the other, at the other stadiums. The NFL does have a twenty-five ounce, that's their max. That's what the NFL says, that's your max. You can't serve any more than that. The alcohol content between a beer, a seltzer and a hard seltzer, they all vary between five and four percent. So it's it's not really a, an alcohol percentage issue. But I would like to kind of be ahead of the curve here and I think I drafted a memo for the board to actually give us some authority moving forward to control these beverages at twenty-five ounces across the board and not run into, I don't know, if we could see thirty-two ounces, forty, I'm just, I'm getting a little, you know, dramatic on that. So I'd just like to see if the board would be interested in kind of tackling this and it's kind of, I'm going to call it like, you know, amending the the regulation just to kind of catch up with the times. Town Council has already weighed on, weighed in on this and we've been going back and forth and gave us excellent guidance as well. We started off with we couldn't authorize a certain amount of beverages beyond the twenty-two or twenty-four or whatever it is. But then we we learned very quickly that actually we had no authority because it wasn't a beer and our regulations don't really address anything beyond that.
Yeah, so this is kind of like a language cleanup, you know, hard seltzers and things like that didn't exist. And then we've all seen, you know, if you've been to an event, whether it's a.
So a beer is a beer.
Yeah.
A seltzer is, if we stretch it, it's a, it's a, it's a malt, which is the alcohol is generated from the same process. But the hard seltzer is a distilled liquor is injected into the drink. That's where we just have a gap. So, and we're seeing the trend, we're seeing, and we're seeing the demographics at football and concerts isn't solely just beer as the go-to drink. We're seeing a little diversity, so this would give us a little regulation.
And then we're also seeing the more than the twenty-two ounces, like what comes from, I'll just say, Anheuser-Busch or whatever. You know, those like bigger cans that you get at wherever you go to a venue, the twenty-five ounces.
Yeah, we're seeing like twenty-three point four ounces. So we're talking three ounces at the end of the day. That's that's basically the conversation we have. Allow our regulation to manage those additional three ounces with these kind of beverages and I think we'd be in a good spot.
And these are in containers, not in cups?
They, the packaging, even the industry packaging is essentially, but what we've seen is containers. Um, I, and I would say the draft cups for beer are probably closer to the twenty-four, but the packaging of the um, aluminum cans is like twenty-three point four for some of the seltzers.
So we do have another long motion, um, that's really kinda language cleanup for the concerns that Chief brought up. You know, when when we actually took a close look at the regulations, I think there was three things there that that needed cleanup. So any further questions or discussion on the three items in the long motion that's here for what Chief has described? No?
No.
Okay, sorry, this one's even longer than the last one.
Uh, motion to amend the Select Board's policy entitled Rules and Regulations for Holders of Alcohol Beverage Licenses in the Town of Foxborough. Move to amend the language of section one definitions of the Town of Foxborough's Rules and Regulations for Holders of Alcoholic Beverages Licenses as follows. Number one, alcoholic beverage as used herein shall mean any liquid intended for human consumption as a beverage and containing one-half of one percent or more of alcohol by volume at sixty degrees Fahrenheit. And for the purposes of these regulations, said terms shall include without limitation beer, wine, hard seltzers, hard ciders, alcohol-infused beverages, malt beverages, and any other beverage subject to regulation and licensure pursuant to GLC one thirty-eight. Number seven, a beer shall mean a maximum of twenty-five fluid ounces of beer in a container unless otherwise authorized by the Chief of Police. And insert in a new section twenty-two to read as follows, and remember the following sections in sequence. Number twenty-two, unless otherwise expressly provided in these rules and regulations, no alcoholic beverage as defined herein shall be served in a container exceeding twenty-five fluid ounces in volume without prior written authorization by the Chief of Police.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? So John, if we if we can just have those updated?
Yep.
Posted to the website, and then I think Katie just sent these out to everyone, we should probably.
We will notify all license holders, so everybody's aware of the change in the regulation.
Okay, all right, perfect, so um, that's it for those two items, thank you very much.
And can I get my vote for the uh, Founder's Day Committee right now? We're all set with the police department, we have a plan in place, okay?
Okay, all right, yeah. We've done this a time or two before, okay. All right, thank you, I know a lot of work has gone into this, a lot of conversation, so thank you very much.
We got there, good teamwork.
Yes. All right, and next up, we have the Founder's Day Committee, I know we know who you are, but if you can introduce yourselves to everyone at home, you coming up? Oh, no, okay, just one. Okay, and and we apologize that, we apologize, we're about forty minutes behind.
That's okay, our our actual Founder's Day meeting is going on right now, so either way, we're in a meeting.
Sunglasses.
Glasses.
Oh, yes, I might do those tomorrow.
So um, thanks, um, my name's Scott O'Donnell, I'm the Chairman of Foxborough Founder's Day, Monica Fessler.
Parade chairman for Founder's Day.
Who's been saying they're gonna give it up for many years now?
I know, it's just hard to give up, it's so much fun, it's hard to.
If anybody wants to run for chairman, you'll be running unopposed.
Sorta like Steph.
Exactly, so um, yeah, um, a lot of same again, as far as the features and everything that's concerned, we do have a couple of changes. We have a new town manager, John, we met at the uh, at the election, so you're familiar with, you had a similar kinda gig at uh, in Northborough.
In Northborough, it was uh, it was Apple Fest.
Okay.
And that went for days, so this is easier.
I was gonna say, it was a couple of days, I heard.
We get it done in one day, it's a long day, but we get it done.
Yes.
Um, so uh, a- as you guys probably know, we have the parade, a lot of music, we end with the awesome fireworks. In the middle, we have a field day, and it is all nonprofits, local church groups, sports groups, what have you. Um, that's kinda why we do it, you know, the parade's fun, fireworks are fun. This is some people's biggest fundraiser of the year, so that's a big part of it as well, so um, you know, and also, a lot of people think that we're part of the town, we're not, we're a private nonprofit, and um, it it, that said, and we're a small group. Uh, that said, it doesn't happen with the town, police, fire, admin, DPW, it doesn't happen without you guys, so we really appreciate that. The Fire Department, Deputy Chief Buckley really steps up uh, in recent years, and and boy, I, it's it's almost hands-off between Atlas Power Tech and 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 uh, the Massachusetts, you know, fire people at the state level, and it's just been so seamless, and it's worked out great, and the fireworks are great, so. Uh, that said, we we really appreciate um, the town, and obviously, we have a tight budget, we spend about almost exactly what we get in uh, for donations, and every year, I'm blown away, the the townspeople individually, and uh, the local businesses step up every year, so. Thank you for that. A couple of small changes, um, oh, and just to let you know, we do have our boot drive on Memorial Day, that's a Saturday, and it goes from seven AM to one PM. You see us out there with the rockets, it's similar to a boot drive, we call it the rocket drive. And um, this year, we're gonna try to smooth the traffic flow a little bit better, we have um, the stickers that we hand out that say I donated, kind of a get out of jail free pass, if you come through the town again, you already donated, it's gonna have a um.
A Venmo, a Venmo code on it?
Yeah, QR code, yeah.
A QR code.
Yeah, we're high-tech over here.
Yeah.
So that's gonna have that on there, so if someone wants to donate later that way, if they don't have change, they won't be fumbling for change and and stuff like that. Also, uh, an ease of use and a safety thing as well, uh, we're gonna cut the parade off at Carpenter Street, so they're not gonna go towards the booth after that. Uh, if you can picture the end of the parade coming down South Street, they're just gonna take a left on Carpenter Street, and you know, that'll be that there. It was just real awkward at the end of, there was really no ending and no place to stop and turn around, except for the the booth area.
The actual parking lot.
Which is full of kids and cars and stuff, so we just said, you know, um, there's a couple houses, I'll apologize to the Morrisons, but there's um, you know, there, it it was, it kinda made sense to end it there.
And just with the start of the parade being up at one thirty-two central, we thought it would be easy for anybody who had vehicles that they were parking, that they that they would be able to get back to their vehicles without getting back into parade flow if they were turning around and coming back.
So things, because a lot of them go to the field though.
Correct.
So how is that gonna look?
Those those groups that, and most of them have contacted me ahead of time to say, hey, we're gonna head down to our field with our float, is that okay? We will make sure that they get onto the field going down the booth parking lot access.
Okay.
So we are making concessions for that, but we do have have a couple of groups that just can't make that turn, and they can't go down to the high school to turn around and come back, so we thought for the few small groups that do go onto the field, that we would allow those people, we would know well in advance what vehicle is making their way down, and who will be turning at Carpenter Street.
Right, we do have the Lions Club, they, there there are a few.
The iMobile.
The iMobile, yeah, they um, they participate in the parade, then they have their float or whatever situation they have is a part of our field day as well, so there will be the odd few that go that way, but way less traffic, it just makes way more sense.
Will there be like a barricade now, so people will know too that are pedestrians, that there's no parade coming by there?
So, we just talked about that tonight at the meeting, and Scott, you're, this is new information, you. Okay, uh, we have sandwich boards that we are going to put signs on both sides of the sandwich board, letting people know. Uh, publicity-wise, we're going to make sure Frank, our publicity person, lets it get into the papers. When we go to do Foxborough Cable Access, we'll make sure that we make mention of it. I think in my parade paperwork, I did put that the parade is going to stop at Carpenter Street this year. So any, anybody who has any concerns, they they're more than welcome to contact us, and we can kind of talk through it. But we we've seen maybe a handful, four or five, that actually go onto the field from the parade. So the iMo- iMobile is probably one of the biggest, and in the past, we had a nonprofit group who took their float and put it out onto the field and um, fundraised on the field for Founder's Day, so it was great.
Okay, yeah, because most of the fire apparatus is down.
Right.
In that, so, okay.
It's just easier to have them get left on Carpenter, kinda get out of the mix.
I know the the Fire Department tends to park on Carpenter Street with their apparatus, but I think by the time they all get back around, only the few that are staying for the field actually stay, and they make their way behind the iGo so that they've parked their vehicles back there, so hopefully uh, groups won't have any issues cutting down Carpenter Street to get back.
Okay. All right.
Missed anything?
No, I think you did a great job.
No, thanks.
I do just wanna ta- so we talked about the parade route, starting at one thirty-two, going down around the Common Bird, just because it is a public, you, public way, I like to let everyone know where it's going, down Bird, I'm sorry, down Mechanic Railroad Bird, up, down Carpenter, okay. School Carpenter, okay. All right, I know I usually circle back and then sit in front of the skate park and watch it again, so I'll have to.
That's a good spot.
Figure it out.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Yeah, non, yeah, no, yeah, all right, so let's get that PSA, we'll work on that tonight too, maybe they'll pick it up.
We've put it on our website, and I know we worked, uh, did we work with you last year to to update? So we'll we'll do the same this year to get that information out. We're we're trying our hardest, we were trying to just make it so that it was feasible for everybody, and last year, we had groups that turned down Carpenter Street because they didn't, they didn't know, and as a committee, we thought just safety concerns of the groups that were trying to turn around and come back because they needed to get back to their vehicles, that this just made more sense to have it. And it it is a little bit shorter, but I think uh, gesture-wise, it's it's.
Yeah, it's not much shorter.
No, it's just a little bit, no. Yeah, it's just, I I think people, once they get back into the rhythm, you might remember, we didn't do it for two years up until last year, so. And that was, so, we were happy to have it back, and now we'll get back in a rhythm, and um, we'll get new features every year, but yeah, we're psyched, so.
Okay, great, any questions? So the parade's at nine, the roads will close a little bit earlier than that, obviously.
Parade's at ten.
Oh, parade's at ten, so, so wait, roads close at nine, which is what we've got, okay.
Between nine and nine-thirty, the uh, Police Department has control over that, they they will, and we're in constant communication with them, so we will know, and.
We have some upcoming meetings, but I want to mention.
Upcoming, oh.
Oh, meeting with the DPW and Police Department.
We do have a meeting with a core group this Friday with the town, we're meeting with the DPW, we're meeting with the town manager. I think Mark Craig, I'm I'm not sure if he's about to come, but I know that that.
Especially where he has, he has recreation now, so.
Right, so just so they know that, they know our plan for the day. It doesn't ver- uh, change much over the year, it hasn't changed much in the fifteen years I've done it, it's just nice to be on the same page with everybody, so they're aware of what what's happening on that day, because it is a big day, and the Police Department starts setting out parking cones, so people don't park down Central Street, they start doing that Saturday morning, so just to make patrons know of the the shops that are around that that is going to happen, so we'll meet with them this Friday and kind of go through the the whole day, including um, field events that happen and what we're doing on the field, and then going straight into fireworks, what happens with with security and detail.
And you guys doing the shuttles again?
Uh, so I just reached out to our partner, he is going to.
So you're learning a lot.
So I just happened to, I had, happened to text him yesterday, so he is going to let me know, he wanted to know the dates and the times. If the shuttles are able to run, they're going to run from eight-thirty to nine-thirty in the morning, for anybody who may have to park down at the booth, who's got the permit to park down at the booth, the shuttles will run from there back up to one thirty-two central. It will stop during the parade, and then I said between eleven-thirty and two-thirty, when people are at the field and they need to move about town, they'll be able to take the shuttles.
Yeah, those are, I think we, did we take it last, no, I didn't take it, no.
No, there was a, there was a miscommunication with the shuttle last year, so we'll make sure, I I don't know that the shuttle knew to to go to the the spot where where it was, because there were some um, some mix-ups with the uh, actual signage. So we will make sure that 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 is set, and last year, we traveled with the shuttle once around, so he knew where all the stops were, but I think that it.
And we do have all that parking at the Schneider lot too, so keep in mind, there's a ton of parking, and it's close there too, so.
We have to have, make that known, yeah.
Make sure you include that, yeah.
Put it on the map on, on the reporter.
Yeah, I'm sure Paige, she has the latest map, the uptown map too, that has all the parking spots and lots, if you wanna kinda use that.
Oh, that's perfect.
No, the shuttle was a, was a great donation, and it it's such a, it was a huge feature that we added over the last couple of times we had Founder's Day, so yeah.
All right, great, any other questions, ready for a vote? All right.
Okay, uh, motion to approve the use of public way application for Founder's Day on June tenth from nine AM to twelve PM.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, we're excited, hi.
Thank you, I can't wait.
Thanks, guys, we'll see you on the tenth.
Thank you so much.
It's coming up fast.
It is.
Yeah, tell me about it.
John, we usually march in the parade, did anyone tell you that?
Oh, I'll be there.
Okay.
I mentioned that, go ahead.
That is, that's mine, I have started to send out the letters to the different committees, we try and invite every committee that would like to come join and march in the parade. It's just a fun event, and you get to see, you get to see a little bit about uh, the people who come out for the day, so we're excited to have you join us this year.
And the Health Department, and Rec Board, and.
School Committee.
School Committee, they're gonna have a table on the field, if you guys wanna participate, that'd be great.
Oh, they already have tables?
They have asked for tables, so.
We'll send a deadline for you guys.
Okay, okay.
All right, that's fine.
That's our sales pitch.
Okay.
Thank you so much, we really appreciate it.
All right, thank you for all you do.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
All right, thanks, sorry we were so late.
Not a problem.
Good to learn about the stadium.
All right, all right, so next we have the Audit Committee Report, and Dennis is our Audit Committee member. We all do have a report here and a recommendation, but I think that we've learned some new news, so I don't know how much if you wanna kinda run through that with the board.
All right, I'll go through the the minutes really quickly, and and then we can talk about the uh, an issue that has uh, that's come up. Uh, the Audit Committee had a meeting on April fourth to discuss both the FY twenty-two audit status and the FY twenty-three audit engagement. Audit Committee discussed the best practice of changing auditors after a certain number of years, and the benefits of changing audit firms periodically. The town has been using the same audit firm for over ten years. So looking at the best practices and turning to the Government Finance Officers Association, they recommend multi-year agreements of at least five years in duration, after which a full competitive selection process or rotation of senior engagement staff should occur. So the Audit Committee voted unanimously to recommend to the Select Board to instruct management to perform a request for proposal from a minimum of three audit firms, ideally, management should obtain the RFP from at least five audit firms. The Audit Firm, Audit Committee also is recommending that management exclude the current audit firm from this RFP process. Hopefully, the RFP due date will be the end of May to follow, uh, to allow us time to review the proposals before they start the new fiscal year in uh, in July, the Audit Committee will convene again sometime in June to review the RFPs and make our recommendations on the audit firm selection and audit scope to uh, to the Select Board. None of this relates to the competence of professionalism or capability of the current auditor and the work that he's done over a number of years. It's really the best practice that really exists in not only in the private sector, but in the public sector in terms of, you know, how often should you actually change your audit firm? So, uh, so go, trying to go forward before we, this was all put together, we came to understand that the current auditor has a three-year contract, when when did his contracts start?
Uh, it was signed uh, November of last year, so it, the audit will flow through fiscal twenty-three and twenty-four.
Right. So, and then we, we, learning that new information, we decided that uh, you know, just to bring it here, that we don't wanna try to break the contract, to terminate the contract, we don't think that's appropriate under the circumstances. Uh, and we are, we are com- uh, you know, comfortable with, you know, changing the recommendation to at the end of his contract. You know, everything that's here will be executed in the same way, in same fashion, at the end of his contract.
Okay, great, and I imagine there'll be another report next year that'll probably be more timely for that, now that we have that new information, so.
So is this a a learning moment though too, is there a reason why the contract was signed and nobody knew? That it didn't come either before this board, or it probably more to the Audit Committee?
Didn't, didn't come to the Audit Committee.
And I don't think it would come to our board, I think that's an operational issue that I would think it would, it would run through the town manager's office, so. Definitely information that would've been helpful for the board to have, for sure.
Yeah.
For sure, um.
Well, I think the Audit Committee didn't need your advice, so.
Yeah, but I mean, for the Audit Committee, yeah, yeah.
That's why it happened.
Right, yeah.
It's it's not uncommon for, you know, the contracts to move forward unless there's an issue with the auditor, but as I, as I did meet with the Audit Committee, uh, and I did uh, inform them, one of the things I just did before I left Northborough was we put our, ours out to bid. It's not a difficult process, and uh, you know, we can, we can do this as soon as the contract is near expiring, um, we can put it out to bid, I think the current order auditor knows that. I think the current auditor knows that the town is likely to do that. So I don't see any issues with this.
Good.
I just want to give a shout out to the Audit Committee and Larry Oi for the work that they've been doing. This committee was really not very active before he took over as chair. And, you know, very diligently and seriously going after, about the work of being a very effective audit committee. And they're doing a great job. And all the people on the committee are very committed and dedicated, so.
Yeah, and have really great background to be on that committee. So it's a really great committee. Thank you for all that. And thank you, Larry, for kind of getting it back going, because we are supposed to get a report every year. And, you know, I know that there's probably been years that it's kind of just fallen by the wayside. So Larry, Larry got this going again, and we'll make sure that we keep an eye on it, especially, John, you know, going forward.
Absolutely. Everything got a little bit off track during COVID.
Yeah.
You know, just everything is off schedule slightly. So in the complications of, the complications of the CARES Act and the ARPA funding with all the federal aid put everybody behind. So audits, you know, we always, in Northborough, where I came from, we were always trying to be the first audit to get done. And we were all over our auditor, and they were just backed up. So it's just, we'll get back on a regular schedule and proceed accordingly.
All right. So up next, we have an open meeting law complaint that was received regarding our April 25th meeting. We do have a draft response here that we want the board to look at. Since it's from you, do you mind just kind of giving a quick?
Would you like me to walk you through this?
Yeah, do you mind just giving a quick overview?
Not at all. So the complaint is related to the April 25th meeting of the board. And after posting of the agenda, which has to be done 48 hours in advance, as you know, we wanted to get, we're trying to work with local folks, and POW Missing in Action Flagpole Installation was the request to come on. So we amended the, we amended the agenda that Monday, so the 24th, for the meeting on the 25th, which is perfectly legal to do. But we got a complaint from a gentleman from Northport, Alabama. So nothing local. But it's two minor technical issues. One is when you amend, when you amend an agenda, you have to amend the original agenda. And the town clerk had left the original agenda up and then put the amended agenda, which, so again, if you, as a public member, if you went up, you could easily figure out what was going on here. But there's a technicality that you have to amend the original. So that's number one. The second is, I think it's been a long practice, you know, just posting agendas, is, it says the Foxborough Town Hall, you know, the gala room. I don't think there's anybody who couldn't figure out where the Foxborough Town Hall is if you wanted to, if you needed to. But technically, on the agendas, there should be the address of the location. So there's two minor administrative errors. We've put things in place now. I met with Bob Cutler, the town clerk. He'll make sure that if there's ever an amended agenda, that the original gets amended. And then any agenda that gets posted for any board or committee, we want to make sure that has the address on it. So what's in your packet is an acknowledgement of those two minor administrative oversights and a letter that goes back to the complainant, as well as going back to the Attorney General's Office. And in my opinion, this very quickly and easily resolves it.
And just to clarify, too, on the agenda from the 25th, they had come to us in time. And I think Christine and I just forgot to get it on the agenda. So it wasn't that they came to us late, if I'm recalling, right? Yeah, I don't, I don't think that they came to us late. I think it was like, oh, the agenda was posted, and then, oh, shoot, we're supposed to add that and kind of forgot. So it was a little bit of our own.
Not a controversial issue, not a.
A little of our own clerical.
This is trying to work with, you know, community groups.
So, all right. So we will mail out that complaint response, and.
And that should resolve the issue.
Yes, that should resolve the issue. Okay, great. Thanks. So keep going with you, right into the town manager's update.
So been a busy couple of weeks. I had met with the seniors on the 26th, and it was a very lively group, a pretty large group showed up, and I feel like it went well. Did get a tour. You know, we talked tonight about Gillette Stadium, North End, so I did get a tour with the building inspector through that project, which was very helpful for me to get a real understanding and preparation, you know, for this meeting tonight. Met with the Audit Committee. We held a capital planning, capital improvement planning committee meeting as well, took care of some year-end things. I also got a very long tour, a good tour, of all the recreational facilities. So I toured with Heather Renee and then Mark Craig, the Director of Human Services. And then held a pre-town meeting, which was interesting for me since, you know, obviously I'm coming late to the process this cycle. But held the pre-town meeting on May 3rd. That went very well. And then ultimately, it all culminated last night with town meeting, which I have to say, I was impressed with how smooth it went. Clearly, there's a great deal of confidence in the boards and committees and the finances of the town. There's very little debate or discussion, if any, regarding the budget. And a couple articles, obviously, we spent some time talking on, but overall, I thought it was an excellent example of a well-run meeting by a town that clearly has, you know, its act together. So it was a nice roll in for me for a first town meeting, not having been part of the ramp up to it. So overall, I was just impressed with the town and looking forward to digging in a little bit more in the next cycle. The only other thing, I just want to acknowledge that we have a $100 donation to the K-9 Fund from Deb and Mike Stewart. And that's all I have this evening.
And that donation is in memory of Janet Kennedy, who was, the K-9 program was near and dear to her heart.
And one other thing, Deb reached out to me just to include that Linda Walsh was also part of that donation.
So I actually was just texting her about that. I said, "Did you check?" I think Linda Walsh was part of that donation.
It just wasn't on like the transcript.
Yeah.
Okay, you got it. Well, as long as she's, as long as we recognize her, that's all that matters.
Very good.
Okay. Anything else? That's it? We go into Selectman's Update? All right. So we have the Senior Olympics begin May 15th, which is always fun. DPW Open House, May 20th. And then, under New Business, you guys know, this is a, this is a sticking point for me is getting these appointments and committees all accurate. So we have a draft list here. Has the list gone out to the chairs, though?
No, yeah, I'm still working.
So that, has that, we've got to get that out like this week? Because I know someone came up to me after town meeting last night and said, "I think I'm up for appointment." I haven't heard anything, so I know people are starting to ask. So let us know if you see anything on this list that doesn't look right to you guys. And then there's, we need to think about, too, our own appointments. So the EDC is SETH, Town Asset Review Committee, also SETH Audit Committee, and CIP, Dennis. So if we want to switch any of those up, or you're interested in any, just, you know, start thinking about it. We're not taking a vote or anything tonight. But we will be doing that in a future meeting coming up. Do we think we'll do that, the 23rd, then?
So we really don't have a lot of time to get all this out to every chair and have every chair get it out to every person? I've talked to most of the boards, and I think it's going to be a replacement. So there's only a few that are not an issue.
Okay. A check, design review falls off, and that was the one that had asked me?
Okay.
So I don't know that that one went out. So just check, double check on that one. Okay. Old business? I don't have anything. Does anyone else have anything new or old?
Can we just, I mean, we were all there last night, but it was such a small group at town meeting, maybe just a congratulations to Debbie Giardino for that article passing for her pavilion. I don't know, she sent me a picture this morning. I don't know if you know, she voted for it twice. She had two hands up in the air. I couldn't really see her. But anyhow, congratulations to Deb. Well, you know, we've talked about for a well-earned honor for her, and I think she said, maybe in the fall is, will be like the actual ribbon cutting, if you want to say, for it. So anyhow, congratulations to Deb.
Yeah, and that, speaking of recreation ribbon cutting, that pickleball one, that's actually going to be on, the pickleball courts weren't finished, so that's going to be May 23rd at 6:00 PM.
Okay, all right. Do we have an email in there? I could have very well missed that.
No.
Okay.
It was just finalized today.
Okay, okay.
There's going to be an official invitation.
All right, great. And then we just have a few action items.
Oh, one more thing?
Yes, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Under Selectman, I just want to mention what a great job you've done over the last two years.
Oh, thank you.
As chair, you led us beautifully. And I just wanted to let everybody know that I thought you did a great job.
There's a couple of things I haven't finished, so.
You could be ad hoc committee.
Keep working on the communications plan. There's a couple of things that I'm not, I'm not letting go of, if you guys don't mind. I just like to see them through, get them done. All right, great. So under action items, we've got a couple of action items this evening. I think one or two of me have some discussions, so.
You want the motion?
Yeah.
Motion to approve the renewal of two pool table licenses for Rally Point Pub and Inn at Nine Mechanic Street and two pool table licenses, VFW Foxborough Post 2626 at 337 Coacasset Street.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to approve extended hours request for VFW Foxborough Post 2626 to begin serving alcohol at 1:00 PM on Memorial Day, May 29th, and Labor Day, September 4th, and 10:00 AM on Thanksgiving Day, November 23rd.
Second.
So under further discussion, given some of the stuff that had come up at our last meeting with them, I did reach out to Chief Grace and made sure that he was comfortable with this. And he was. So I just wanted to let the board know that I did have that discussion with him. We do have Katie Lang on Zoom. Did you have anything to add to that one? Kate, are you good?
I did. I just wanted to see if we could just only approve the Memorial Day and then wait to approve Labor Day, the Thursday, November 24th, before Thanksgiving, and then the Patriots games, just because we do have some time when the Patriots' schedule comes out, and then just have it be a little bit more clean that way. And I just wanted to make sure that they are aware if they are opening at the 10:00 AM to serve alcohol, that food service does need to be included. I just wanted to make sure everyone was all set with that on the BMW side before we make that approval.
All right. So we're going to amend this to just do Memorial Day, which is May 29th, and then we'll look at Labor Day and the football games down the road. I think that's a great idea.
Yes, please.
Yeah, okay. All right, I like that. So we've amended it to just be Memorial Day, the 29th, at 1:00 PM. All right. No further discussion? All those in favor? Thanks, Katie.
Thank you.
Motion to accept a $5,000 donation for the Recreation Department's Booth Summer Program from St. Albans Lodge, AF and AM.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the March 28th, 2023 Select Board Meeting Minutes.
Second.
Under further discussion, the address of the gala meeting rooms not on the minutes. I don't know if we should get in the habit of including that, too, just coming off the last discussion. Doesn't hurt, so we may just want to, as amended, on both of these for that. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the April 11th, 2023 Select Board Meeting Minutes.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to disobtain because I wasn't there.
All right. And just a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Wait a minute. But I am listed as being there, so.
Which one is that? April 11th? Okay.
Apologies.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Now motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.